Okay, my name is Paul Tegney Ferry. I'm the Chair of the Zoning Board of Appeals. It is now past the hour of 9:00 AM on December 2nd, 2020, 2022. This open meeting of the zoning board of appeals is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order for June 16th, 2021 in act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency. All members of the zoning board of appeals are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. This order allows the zoning board of appeals to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the chair notes otherwise. Members of the public who wish to view the live stream of this meeting may do so by going to Northborough Remote Meetings on YouTube via the link listed on the agenda. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will not feature public comment. The chair confirms that the board members, okay, so members when I call your name, please respond in affirmative. Fran Backstrom.
Here.
Mark Moutain.
Here.
Brad Blanchett.
Here.
Suzie Sizilika.
Here.
Jeff Leland.
Here.
Jeff Grabowski.
Here.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Lori Connors.
Here.
Alright, so today's meeting in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 48, we will hold a public hearing for discussion of David Cool's request to withdraw his application without prejudice for variance for reconstruction of a single family structure on the property located at 80 Main Street, MAP 64, parcel 23 in the Main Street Residential Zoning District. Alright. So. So last Tuesday, this board made a legally binding decision on the 80 Main Street case. From that date, we as a board have 14 days in order to file the decision with the town clerk. Otherwise, the application is deemed a constructive approval. Day after our decision, the applicant requested we grant him a withdrawal without prejudice. It is my opinion that in order to grant an applicant a withdrawal, it must be done during a public hearing. In order to get to the public hearing part for this case, we would need to unwind in order everything that has occurred to this point. Meaning the process to grant the withdrawal would require notification of a butters and a public notification in newspapers for a new date for a public hearing. Once the meeting is held, we need to rescind our votes on the case, reopen the public hearing, then vote to allow withdrawal without prejudice. This is appropriate process for drawing a case from our board. The town council states in its most recent email, the day count logistics make it difficult with the deadline we have approaching. As a board, I view as having two options today. We can proceed as we were and not grant the request for withdrawal. Or we can start the process for a new public hearing. This applicant, we need to agree to extension and a new public hearing we need to occur. By not reversing our process, we leave ourselves open to interpretation that the legally binding decision was never filed on time. If we just say we will allow the withdrawal, you are essentially saying this withdrawal supersedes that of a legally binding decision we made last Tuesday. That is the part I don't agree with. Town council has said this is an uncommon occurrence, which leaves a lot of gray area. To reduce that ambiguity, the proper process is to proceed backward. Is, as a reminder, the framework for making a decision with regards to withdrawal does not exist within Chapter 48. There is no criteria that exists for granting or not granting this request. Unlike a variance or special permit where there are multiple criteria, our decision is based solely on our board's judgment. In my estimation, I believe this board should continue on the current path and not allow withdrawal. We have listened to this case for over two meeting dates in October and November. There have been multiple site visits by board members and staff. And finally, it was the applicant who requested we close the hearing after our initial October meeting. At this point, if the applicant feels aggrieved, there is an opportunity for appeal once this decision has been filed. At this point, I'll open it up to other members of the board for their comments. Does anyone have any comments or questions? Mark.
Um, I respectfully disagree in the complexity of the withdrawal. We have done withdrawals in the past. Yes, it is unusual that we do so after our decision has been reached. But it has not been, we've not paid, let's say we have not paid any legal penalty for stretching where we can do a withdrawal in the past. And I think that in this case, the the applicant is in agreement that if it was a withdrawal, that he wouldn't pull it, pull anything legal shenanigans, shall we say, as far as taking it any further, he would take it for what it is a withdrawal. That being said, I'm not sure that he's going to convince the board with anything that he's going to get any kind of different decision. But, you know, I just, in the future, I don't want to prejudice ourselves to not doing withdrawals because of the requirement that we hold a hearing, unwind our decision, and, and so on. If we want to do a withdrawal, we should just simply make it a withdrawal and and vote on it and have that supersede the previous decision.
Okay. Frank, I think you had your hand up, but.
Yeah, I mean, that's fine. Yeah, I would like to give the applicant an opportunity to take another look at his project, see whether he could meet any of the additional criteria that was brought up after the closing of the public hearing. I would like not to have to have him wait two years in order to make that pitch. But to Mark's point, there's no guarantee that the decision would not be the same, but I do think that the fairness piece of it would be to give that additional opportunity. And however, we have to, whatever steps we have to go through to withdraw that decision without prejudice, I would be amenable to.
Okay, Jeff.
So to follow Mark and Fran, I agree. I can think of two times in the last maybe seven or eight years that we did this. In both cases, I don't think the person, the applicants actually did come back, but it allows them that opportunity. I remember to the first meeting we had, I first, I wasn't voting, but I said, I don't see the path forward. But by the end of that meeting and then all the way to the deliberations in the second meeting, I was convinced, as I think the applicant may be, that there was going to be an approval. And only in the deliberations when I think Suzie brought up the, the path forward, which I agree with, did it come out and there was no further opportunity. I mean, even going through the, the draft decision, it looked like it was, okay, we're going to do this, we're going to do this, we may disagree, but it was heading to a approval. And so I was surprised and I can't, I can imagine the applicant may have been as well. So since we have done it in the past, and I think there's some opportunity to give this applicant a chance to address those issues that weren't given before and not wait two years, I'm in favor of that. I still don't know if he can accomplish what's necessary for the use variance. But he, I think it's rather than having to wait, not only him, but us, two more years and then revisit this. I think it's right to continue on if he chooses to take that path, if we grant this, which I would be in favor of granting.
Okay, Suzie, I think your hand is raised.
Hi. So first of all, I wasn't on the board seven or eight years ago because I would have voted against any withdrawal after a decision is made. A decision is made, there's a process if the applicant does not want the decision to appeal. You can, ignorance of the law is not an excuse in any area of the law, any, any area of the law. I Googled use variance and it comes up, the steps. Our bylaws are available in the planning office and online. The minutes are also available online and in the planning office. I asked the questions that apply to the use variance test, both on the site visit a couple of times and in the hearing, both nights. I did, I understand why we go through the, why we go through the mock decision, and I do understand Lori's point, it's easier to go through the mock decision and to take stuff away or to do a no than to draft a yes after we have a discussion. I have seen where it's been useful in times past where the applicant will say, hold up, I don't, I don't, I don't want to vote, I want to go back, want to go back to my engineer, I want to go back and fix this, or a letter comes from the fire chief about parking, oh, can, can we, can we put this on hold? I'm still within my time period. Sure, that's fine. Um, and some of those votes, I mean, I, I recall one where it was back and forth through the, I wasn't allowed to vote at one. Went back and forth about the parking and everything else, and we went over the conditions and someone still voted no. Someone who had participated in the discussion about the mock decision. I see its usefulness. However, that doesn't mean that that's how we have to vote. Um, I mean, there's a legal process and we, our legal counsel, our attorneys actually told us what the process is with timing and everything else. I mean, we can't just disregard that. That's, that's, it's literally the law, like notice, publication, a butters, opening up for a meeting, just because you didn't do it before, doesn't mean that we, we don't do it now. Um, I, I just want, I want to follow the rules. And within that two years, maybe, maybe that, maybe the zoning laws in that area can be changed. That's what annual town meeting is. We're not the, we're not the deciding factor here. Um, that's all I have to say right now that I can think of. Thank you.
Thanks, Brad, you have your hand raised?
Yeah. So during you mentioned something, I was being constructively approved. I guess this is maybe more of a question for Lori. So what does that actually mean if we withdraw without prejudice and it's constructively approved? What's, what are the the next steps, I guess afterwards? What, what can happen? What paths can we go down?
So, so you can vote to allow them to withdraw without prejudice and instead of an answer, the decision, what we would file with the town clerk is the actual withdrawal letter. So it would not be constructively approved in that case because we would have filed something with the town clerk. So the withdrawal just enables them to refile within the two-year window. If you want the denial to stand, then you would not vote to allow the applicant to withdraw. I would file the decision with the town clerk by the Tuesday deadline. And then his recourse is that he could either appeal the decision with a land court or other court of pertinent jurisdiction. Or he could wait the two-year period of time, refile the same application, or he could file a substantially different application within the two-year window. However, in that case, it would have to go to the planning board first. The planning board would have to determine that it wasn't a duplicate decision. I mean, a duplicate application, and if they made that binding, then they could file with the ZBA.
Okay. So if we do allow the he can just.
Yeah, you're really breaking up. I'm having a hard time hearing you.
Is that correct?
Brad, Brad, can you please repeat your question?
Sorry.
Yeah, it's your, your internet connection is breaking up.
One second. How about now?
It's a little bit better. You could try asking the question.
Do you guys hear me now?
Yes.
Unbelievable. Sorry about that. Yeah, so basically Lori, so what you just said, just, just to summarize, the applicant cannot just go ahead with his project as he initially requested with the board. So it's simply a withdrawal and he just can reapply within the two years. He can't just go ahead with the initial proposal that he presented to us over the last two meetings.
So if you authorize the withdrawal, then he can refile the same exact application if he wanted to. So the, the decision no longer exists. So the, the only way he wouldn't be able to file the same exact application is if you deny his request to withdraw the application and the denial is filed with the town clerk instead. In that circumstance, he either has to file a different application or he has to wait the two-year period of time and then he can refile the same application or he can appeal the decision to the land court. So those are his options if, if the denial stands, if the withdrawal is approved, then like I said, he could just refile the same, same application all over again.
Jeff, Leland.
So to follow that, the, so the avenues are, if we don't vote this, if the board doesn't vote this, that he files a new application and goes to the planning board, which will probably include a used variance, and we know how the planning board probably will feel about that. So then there'll be another avenue to sue. Then there'll be another avenue to appeal this decision by us at the land court. So we'll have two possible lawsuits. Not speaking for the applicant, but I'm just saying, as a lawyer, that would be, even if I was going to wait and refile for two years, why, I would be, why not start that? So, you know, it's not our decision to make, but our town is getting to be so litigious, planning boards, ZBA and all the rest. I think we have to follow the right formula. I agree with Suzie completely in that regard. I repeat again, I'm not sure that I would vote differently on the same application. But I think no matter which avenue we go by not allowing this as we have in the past, there, we're setting up for further appeal process. And I would like to see that avoided if we possibly can.
Thanks, Jeff. Frank.
Yeah, I mean, Brad, it really is as simple as, do we want to give him an opportunity within the next two years to try again and maybe meet the criteria or not? And that's the same thing that we did in the two times in the past couple of years, and actually both of them were dog related as it was. But it was the, the walking park up on Rice Ave, and then it was the doggy daycare behind the fire station, I believe. So it really is just giving him another shot at it without having to wait or go through a lengthy process. And I mean, following the law is important, but our town council also did give us an opinion, a legal opinion on whether or not we can do this. And we have done it and there has not been any consequence to that, legal consequence. And it is as legally, it's legal advice from town council that we are allowed to do this.
Okay. Suzie, I think your hand is raised.
Um, I think we've been lucky that we haven't had litigation come out of this and I don't, I think it also sets a precedent that anybody with a decision, say another applicant last Tuesday, we could find ourselves here next week. This is going to be happening like, we're going to end up having like every month, oh, I'm denied. File for withdrawal without prejudice after the decision while we're checking over the decision to make sure it has everything that it's, it's in, which I totally agree with, that it's emailed the next day and we can read it over. You know, have a day or two to read it over before it's filed. It's perfect window, Northborough, ZBA. Any decision can go, like, I mean, we're, we're the ZBA. It's, it's part of the legal process. We made a decision. They are already appealing. Well, I mean, they're already appealing it. We, between the site visits and the time on screen alone, I would say at least seven hours on this. Um, and now we're just going to open it back up again, you know? Fence variance, you know, the fence setback next week, you know, something else the week after. I think that precedent has to be thought of as well. Because what does our decision mean if everyone can just file to withdraw after? I'll lower my hand. I don't, it automatically goes up and then.
So I guess, so what I'll say is, so my opinion with regards to the process, right? And why I feel this way is, you know, if, if you look at the process for us making a decision, right, where an applicant files a case, there's public notification, and we open the case, we discuss it, we close it, and then we make a legally binding decision, right? There's no ambiguity at all, no gray area, which, you know, town council has mentioned in terms of, of something like this occurring before. Once we make a decision, we have 14 days to file. If we don't file, it's a constructive approval. There's no ambiguity on that. There's a list of cases that, you know, go through towns that have not filed in the appropriate timeframe. And, you know, a constructive approval has been granted, right? What, there is a gray area, right, is this area where we have this variance decision, legally binding decision and the 14-day deadline. Right? And what we're saying is, we're just making a judgment that the withdrawal that would occur in between the, the time between we make a decision and when we file supersedes that of our legally binding decision. And that's the only part that I disagree with, right? So, and then I guess Jeff, you brought up the point about waiting the two years. If, you know, he, if he wants to file the same thing, yes, he has to wait two years. But if he makes material changes to the application, right, he can file within that two-year timeframe. So, right, I think your hand is raised.
Yeah, so just, I mean, I find it interesting. If we grant the withdrawal without prejudice, that is a legal binding decision. So you can't just say one legal binding decision is all we have the authority to do. We actually have the authority to grant a legally binding decision to allow him to withdraw without prejudice. It is the opinion of town council that we are, it's permissible for us to do that. Gray area exists in the law. That's why you have opposing sides. That's why you have opposing counsel. I mean, I'm not an attorney, but I know that. And so the idea that, again, all we're doing is giving this applicant an opportunity to try again within a two-year period. And if part of that process, the legal binding decision process and authority of the zoning board is to allow that, what, it doesn't matter to me if the, if anyone wants to come back and say, hey, all right, I hear why you denied it. I'm going to try something else and I'd like not to have to wait two years. It's allowed. So in this case, I think we should allow it.
Okay, thank you. Jeff, Leland.
I, this will be the last time because I don't want to sound like I'm repeating. But if, if he comes back, if we grant the withdrawal and he comes back with substantially the same thing without some material changes, the decision is going to be the same. It would be a waste of his time, let alone our own. Back to Suzie's, I, I agree, we spent, I didn't do the walkthrough, but six or seven hours in, in discussions and hearings. But there wasn't even an inkling of, from my perspective, of it being denied until the last half hour. And again, whether he can overcome the hurdles or not with the existing plan, I have serious doubts. But with the other things having been said, that's where I agree. I certainly agree with what Fran's comment was. I had another thought, so I may raise my hand again, but I forgot it right now.
Alright, thank you, Jeff. Mark. Mark, you're on mute.
Um, I'll also point that historically we've had then long discussions when a proposal has come forward, whether it is substantially different from the previous proposal, which then again leads us, you know, into another gray area of, is it substantially different or is it the same proposal? By granting him a withdrawal, it cleans up the issue and says, you know, he knows the history, as Jeff said, that he got denied for exactly what he put forward. I don't see him coming forward with the exact same proposal. Um, and and we don't have to have him legally challenge us saying, no, this proposal is different and have that whole argument again. So I guess that's also why I'm in favor of the withdrawal.
I'll go back to Jeff. I think you had your hand up first, Leland, sorry.
Thanks, Paul. Sorry, Suzie, but Mark prompted my, my other issue, and that's a question for Lori. And that is, you mentioned that it would have to go in front of the planning board to determine whether it's substantially different. Not sure I have been through that process. I don't know if anyone else has. So could you, as if Paul, the chair allows, could you explain that a second? Because I would think that the, if it comes forward as a used variance again for this, developing this third, this single unit, that is going to, no matter how it looks, is going to become, be determined as that's substantially the same, deny. Am I wrong in that? And granted, the planning board would be the person, the board that decides that, but could you explain that process with the chair's permission?
Sure. So it's called the repetitive petition procedure and it's specified in Chapter 48. And essentially what it says is that, so they would have to file with the planning board. And I can't remember if it's a public hearing or not. I think it might be a public hearing. So they'd have to file the application, the original application, and then the new application. And then the planning board would have to make a determination whether it qualifies as a repetitive petition or whether it's a new application. So they would have to make a determination as to whether it's substantially different. And I can certainly send you some information about, I believe they have to, there's certain criteria that they would have to make a determination on. And if they, their decision is that it is not a repetitive petition, then that would give the green light to the ZBA to accept the new filing despite the fact that it's within the two-year limit.
Okay, thank you, Lori. Appreciate that. Jeff, did you have a follow-up?
Just to follow, maybe that's something at a later date, we could review and look at for further, you know, knowledge and experience. That's all. Thank you.
Great. Suzie, thank you.
So right now, what we're deciding is whether or not, A, whether or not we want to vote on withdrawing our decision, and then B, we would, if that vote were, if that decision were positive, then we would, in order to vote on the withdrawal, we would need to do the public hearing and everything. Is that, I'm a little like, I'm just trying to figure out.
Well, Lori, you.
If I can speak to that. So you don't actually have to withdraw your decision. So essentially, all you're voting on today is whether you're going to allow him to withdraw his, his application. So if you want it to be within the context of the public hearing, then we would need an extent. then we would need an extension from the applicant allowing us to go beyond the um 14 days to file a decision and the 100-day limit for um filing a decision, so there are two limits. So the ZBA has to make their decision within 100 days of filing the decision, I mean, filing the application. And then once the decision's made, the ZBA has 14 days to, to file it with the town clerk. Um, so we would need relief from both of those deadlines. Uh, because it's impossible within that timeframe to advertise a public hearing for two weeks and meet the 14-day deadline for advertising. So uh, you know, that, otherwise, you know, the, i- if you decide that you want to vote on the um withdrawal today, then that's also an option available to you. And like I said, I would file the letter, so the letter that he submitted, I would file this letter with the town clerk and that would stop the clock. So there would be no constructive approval.
Or we can just not vote on it and let our decision stand, is that?
You can vote no, I mean, you have an application before you, the application to withdraw. So you can just, uh, just say, no, you know, I don't agree, you can't withdraw without prejudice or any other way.
Okay.
So that's an option.
So those are, so those are avenues right now.
Yeah, so in that case, I would need Paul to come to the office and sign the decision and then we would file the denial decision with the town clerk. And then the applicant has 20 days to appeal it if he chooses.
Okay, um, yeah, I, so I, I think that's probably the way forward is for someone to make a motion to um, accept the request for withdrawal of prejudice, um, and then, you know, we can sort of vote on that uh as a board, um, but I'll just give everyone one last chance, I think Mark, you're going to have your hand raised or? Uh, sorry.
I was going to make a motion that we uh, that we allow the applicant to withdraw his petition uh straight up and let's get a vote, but.
Okay, so Mark made a motion to withdraw.
Without prejudice.
Without prejudice for the property at 80 Main Street.
Second.
So Mark made a motion to withdraw the application without prejudice. Fran seconded. Uh, Mark?
Aye.
Fran?
Aye.
Suzie?
No.
Brad?
Aye.
And I am a no.
Then we're done.
Okay.
So, so that was a majority vote uh in favor, so I will post this uh withdrawal letter with the town clerk and he can withdraw.
It can, it's not required to be the supermajority of our decisions?
No, it's a majority vote.
Thank you.
I move the majority.
Hold it.
Jeff?
Just wanted briefly say, I appreciate everybody here in their hard, hard uh work and willingness to open up and talk, Jeff, you'll be more comfortable, it takes a while sometimes. But I appreciate that, even if we have differing opinions and that we still are able to work together, so thank you all.
Mm-hmm, thank you, Jeff. Um.
Mr. Chair, I move me adjourned.
I'll, I'll second.
Okay, Fran has made a motion to adjourn, Mark has seconded, uh, Fran?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Brad?
Aye.
Suzie?
Aye.
And I'm an a as well.
Aye.
All right, all right, everybody, have a good weekend.
Have a good day.
Have a good weekend.